Good afternoon. Before I call to order the February 2018 Planning Commission meeting, I'd like to welcome the Geographies of American Cities class at USC. Dr. Dwayne Baker from the Geography Department is here. We welcome you to the meeting. I will now call to order the February 2018 City of Columbia Planning Commission meeting. Welcome to Planning Commission members, staff, and guests. I would like to ask that everyone turn their cellphones or PDAs to the silent or vibrate mode. The administrator will now proceed with the roll call.
Mr. Tupper?
Here.
Mr. Stigemeyer?
Here.
Ms. Hartz?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Uh, Mr. Stern?
Present.
Uh, Ms. James?
Yeah.
Mr. Waits?
Here.
And Mr. Frost?
Present.
We have quorum.
Thank you. Since we have a fairly large crowd tonight, I'd like to go over the meeting format. Applicants with requests before the Planning Commission are allotted a presentation time of ten minutes. This time should include but is not limited to an overview of the project, case history, and any pertinent meetings held regarding the request. This time also includes all persons presenting information on behalf of the applicant such as attorneys, engineers, and architects. This time limit does not include any questions asked by the Planning Commission or staff regarding requests. Members of the general public are given the opportunity to address their concerns in intervals of two minutes. The administrator has a timer and will make presenters aware when their time has expired. The Planning Commission reserves the right to amend these procedures on a case-by-case basis. The Consent Agenda. The Planning Commission uses the Consent Agenda to approve non-controversial or routine matters by a single motion or vote. Examples of such items include approval of site plans, annexations, and street names. If a member of the Planning Commission or the general public would like to discuss an item on the Consent Agenda, that item is removed from the Consent Agenda and considered during the meeting. The Planning Commission then approves the remaining Consent Agenda items. The administrator will now read the Consent Agenda.
Your Consent Agenda this evening consists of the approval of the January 8, 2018 minutes as well as three site plans. Those site plans are for the 2800 block of Divine Street and the 700 block of Maple Street. The third item on the agenda, 10-750 Two Notch Road for a single-family subdivision. And then your fourth item, which is also a site plan, is for a single-family subdivision at 1075 Two Notch Road.
Thank you. Do any Commission members or guests today wish to have any items on the Consent Agenda removed and placed on the regular agenda? I'd like to call for a motion then to approve the Consent Agenda.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Consent Agenda as proposed.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Consent Agenda is approved. We will now proceed with the regular agenda. I would also like to remind everyone, when they come forward to the podium, to please state their name clearly before speaking. No cheering, no clapping, and no approaching this Commission desk by anyone unless we ask you to.
The first item on the regular agenda this evening is 3319 Millwood Avenue. It is a request to rezone the parcel from the Plan Unit Development Commercial District, PUDC, to Single Family Residential District, RS2. And the applicant is here.
All right. Would the applicant like to approach the podium, please?
Good evening. My name is Raymond Perkins. I'm Director of Facilities for Richland School District One. Today, we come having been here on several occasions, and hopefully this is the last one. We simply request to be changed to RS2 rezoning, zoning, and we'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Do any Commissioners have any questions for the applicant?
I have a question. From the previous applications that have been made, is there anything different in this application than previous applications?
Uh, the application itself has not changed. We are still requesting the change to RS2. We have made some changes to the plan itself, but as far as the application itself, there has been no change.
Now, I noticed, I think you all have been here twice within the last year.
Yes, sir.
And I looked at the plan today, actually. This is for the proposed football field, turf field, and the tennis courts.
That's correct.
What's changed?
Uh, the changes, we have imposed no lights, no sound speakers, no scoreboard, any of those things. Primarily, we're looking to put in a practice field in that area. We've changed the orientation such that it is more parallel with the school itself so that it does not point in the direction of any neighbor. And we've also moved the tennis courts away from the Michigan Street side. There is a different distance there. So those have been the major changes that we've made.
Are you asking, am I correct, the staff, are they asking for the same zoning that they've asked the previous two times?
Uh, yes, it's the same, essentially the same application to rezone from the PUD to the RS.
So what's preventing lights from going up at a future date or a sound system or things like that? And has parking been addressed?
So, go ahead.
I can kind of jump in. As far as the rezoning today, we're not looking at the site plan. It's not part of what they're requesting, it's simply a rezoning. If they do proceed and get the rezoning from City Council, they will then proceed to the Border Zoning Appeals for a special exception. And at that point, they'll get into the site plan and where things are going to be laid out. But again, this is not really a site plan review, it's just a straight sending. So in other words, whatever's permitted in RS2 is what could be permitted, either outright or with a special exception, so they're not bound by any approvals as far as specific site plans today.
Would that be submitted back to us to look at?
It would not. It would be looked at by the Border Zoning Appeals.
What are the conditions of their plan that they propose now that requires them to go to BOZA?
Say that again.
The site plan that they were going to propose, I know it's not a part of this conversation, we're talking about rezoning, but based off of what they're planning to do, what are the requirements that they take it to BOZA? What are the specific requirements for that?
It'd be a special exception. There's several criteria that go into a special exception. Vehicle and pedestrian safety, environmental factors, aesthetics, public safety and nuisance conditions, concentration of similar or like uses, character of the areas consistent with the character of the area, is the use compatible with those in the vicinity, and as the proposed special exception, would it adversely affect public interest? So all those criteria would have to be met in the Border Zoning Appeals before they could approve the special exception, in theory, to expand, if you will, the school.
Is there anything that would stop lighting and, um, sound in the future?
Absolutely. The Border Zoning Appeals will have to address that. It's a public meeting, just like this meeting's a public meeting, the Border Zoning Appeals will have to look at nuisance conditions, environmental factors, you know, compatibility with the neighborhood and the surrounding area. So those will specifically have to be addressed at the Border Zoning Appeals, should it make it to the Border Zoning Appeals.
Any other questions for staff or the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm sure we have people from both sides that would like to come to the podium.
Oh, you're still, yeah, he could have spoken.
Excuse me?
Sure.
Thank you all so very much for allowing me the opportunity to speak. And as Mr. Perkins had indicated, we have certainly taken into consideration feedback from this group as well as other meetings that we've had, City Council and so forth. And we do feel that we have made substantive changes based on that feedback and to be compliant and certainly to be in concert with those in that community. So we do appreciate your consideration this evening. As, again, as Ms. Perkins outlined, we have made substantive changes in terms of orientation of the field and other eliminations of items to get to this point. And we feel like we'll be, again, good stewards working the benefit of students and programming, but also in that community as well. So thank you also very much for your consideration this evening.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come forward and speak on behalf of the proposal?
Thank you for the time. My name is Fritz Hamer. I live in the neighborhood. I was very opposed to the original plan for the Dreher Field. I think this is an improvement, eliminating the lights and the sound system. But I am concerned, and I'm glad that Mr. Cohen brought that up, about the possibility of this still being resurrected once the current plan that we see today is completed. I would like to see that the board here, and if there's another legal entity, comes up with an signed agreement that says categorically that we will not allow in the future, whether it's next year or a decade from now or two decades from now, we will not permit lights or a sound system to be installed. This is very important to our neighborhood, and I hope that this will be considered and can be placed in some kind of a legal, if this particular plan that we hear today is to be accepted. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's beyond, that's beyond this.
That's beyond this board's, that's beyond this commission's area. I don't think we're, we can approve something based on that.
Good evening. I'd like to thank the chairman and the members of the board. Appreciate you hearing from all of us again. I'm a 1987 graduate of Dreher High School. I have three children there now. They will be gone before any of this probably goes into the ground because of the delays that have taken place. Even if it's there, I'm not sure my kids will benefit. But I'm here because the other children of the high school deserve these things. I can tell you, when I was at Dreher in 1987, we played soccer games on that exact site. When we were finished with practice, we'd go over and watch the baseball team play baseball games on that site. You do less there now than you could back in the eighties, and I would submit to you that's going the wrong direction. Dreher's been on that same spot since 1938, long before anyone here that you're going to hear from tonight will come and talk about what should take place. I would also point out that the PUD allows for change, so when you hear that there was some agreement that says that it couldn't change, that's not true. Go read the PUD, it'll show you. It allows for change, and we should change. We should continue to grow and improve and make things better. The only reason the district has requested a zoning change is because the city and the city officials told us that's the way we should have to handle these things. We've also talked with the city officials, have already indicated that the PUD is problematic. I believe if you were to go in question then, your own lawyers would tell you that it is probably unenforceable and perhaps illegal. Dreher has made repeated steps to compromise in an effort to resolve this amicably and receive nothing in return. And you will hear that later tonight as we go forward. All the other schools in the district have made these improvements and upgrades. Dreher is falling behind. If you fall behind, you will end up losing students, you will end up losing quality members to your community. And I would ask that you take that into consideration. The district will give you facts and specifics about this, and instead you're going to hear a lot of opinions, and you will hear a lot of concern, fear-based opinions as opposed to facts from the other side. To reject this project would be hypocritical. When you allow changes to Hammond Academy in my neighborhood, if it's good enough to put where I live, it's good enough to put where Dreher's located.
Would anyone else like to come forward?
Good afternoon. Thanks for seeing us again. Three times in one year seems silly. I think I heard last week that it took one year to build the Empire State Building. It's taken us four years to try to get here to put an artificial turf field in. As Vance Strickland said, my name's Shep Hadler, by the way. I'm president of the Dreher Booster Club. I'm a happy parent of five beautiful children, two at Dreher and three at University. All five of them were fortunate enough to play varsity sports in one way or another for their schools, from cheerleading to dance to lacrosse to soccer. I will leave tonight to go to Dreher, and there's three basketball games going on at six, seven, and eight o'clock. My son will play for Dreher basketball team at eight o'clock. I hope the traffic is not too bad. I hope the noise doesn't cause any problems. I hope we don't cause cancer. I hope with the quality of life for somebody who doesn't have a problem. I hope that it's okay for us 1.1 mile away from AC Flora to have a little bit of what their athletes get to have. And I also hope that you do the right thing and change Dreher zoning from PUDC to RS2, which was probably 75 to 80 percent of the property before we expanded to 20-plus acres back in, what, 2004? Hammond zoning is also RS2, and they have every sports facility on-site, from a full gym to practice fields, to softball, baseball track, and a full-service football stadium. I'm disappointed with my neighbors, but I understand, because they're all zoned for AC Flora. It seems silly for us to be zoned for a school, it seems silly for us to be in an area outside of our school zone. If you imagine the state of South Carolina, Dreher sits in Charlotte, and the people in Mecklenburg County are making all the decisions for us. Well, let's get those people in Mecklenburg County back in the Dreher zone, and then at least they could have what they're vying for, which is, they want us to have nothing. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else like to come forward?
Commissioner Jeff Brooker III here. I live at 800 Adjour Road, right across from Dreher High School. Since we are here just discussing the zoning, I would remind them the mission of the Planning and Development Services of the City of Columbia, to guide the development of the city in a manner that enhances quality of life, promotes distinctive neighborhoods, supports businesses, and protects the environment through professional positive, solution-oriented planning, permitting, zoning, and enforcement services. The existing PUDC zone on this site was the result of efforts for a solution over 13 years ago, back in 2003. There is no coherent reason for lifting that zone unless you want to do something radically different that is not solution-oriented for all parties involved. I submit to you that the PUD is legal, and in addition to everything else, we've got a new zoning rewrite that is about to be, that has just been put up for public comment. I think that to try and lift the PUDC in front of that is also problematic, not only for this commission but for the community at large. I trust that you will stick with the plans and policies for land use that we have in this packet, and that it says right here, "Traditional and contemporary architectural styles have a place in these neighborhoods. When infill development is designed, scale and orientation of existing structures on the block should act as design presets." There is no coherent reason for lifting it unless you want to have significant infill development that is inconsistent with everything that has been done already. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Sheila McCoy. My wife and I live at 824 Adjour Road, we're 70 feet away from Dreher High School. To give you some context, my wife and I moved there in 1992. We moved there on the purpose that our children could go to Dreher. I think the gentleman does not miss, is misinformed and misunderstands that Dreher itself is not in its own school zone. They had to go and develop what they call the Dreher Walk Zone, which we are in. Our children had a choice at the time. They could go to Flora or to Dreher. All three of my children went to Dreher. All three of them graduated. They have matriculated in both college and for master's degrees. One of my child, two of my children played on these same fields that the gentleman said he played on in 1987. All of my children graduated, and the one that did graduate with honors from soccer went on into NCAA Division II school from the same fields that he's mentioning. The concern I have for this issue is the fact that my wife and I both are dealing with rare cancers. I know that does not try to pull at your heartstrings, but you understand our quality of life is important to us. Y'all have once before or twice before remanded this back. They have come to us, yes, in two meetings with the demonstration that he's had, but quite honestly, they've broken our trust. How are we supposed to trust them that they will do the right thing? I'm not sure I do. So I beg you, and think about the lives that you impact, and I know it's a tough decision because you are like King Solomon, trying to divide who is right. Thank you for your time, thank you for your efforts, and thank you for your volunteer. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Hamilton Osborne, and I graduated from Dreher High School in 1961. For the past 35 years, my wife and I have lived on Heathwood Circle, two blocks of the Dreher, two blocks east of the Dreher campus. I am here to support the current PUD zoning of Dreher and to oppose the proposed rezoning of Dreher to RS2. In 2003, when the current PUD zoning of Dreher was adopted, I was a member of Columbia City Council, and I voted for the current PUD zoning. The school district needed the PUD zoning in order to rebuild Dreher on the existing site. The alternative was to move Dreher to a new, larger site on the edge of town. In order to keep Dreher where it was, the school district agreed to accept restrictions on the use of the existing campus. In particular, the school district agreed that it would not and could not construct any athletic facilities on the open space now existing on the Dreher campus. This restriction was imposed to protect the interests of people living adjacent to or close to Dreher. If the PUD documents had not contained the restriction on the use of the open space, I would not have voted for the PUD zoning, and the PUD zoning might not have passed. If the PUD zoning had not passed, Dreher could not have been rebuilt where it is today. In 2003, the school district made a deliberate choice between a new, larger campus for Dreher or the existing smaller campus with restrictions on the use of the open space. Having made that choice in 2003, the school district should not now be allowed to repudiate the restrictions to which it agreed in 2003 so that Dreher could be rebuilt where it is today. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Jim Gregory. I live at 812 Adjour Road. I'm also representing my neighbors, the Montagues, at 818. That gives you four households and a road that have spoken here tonight or have been represented. Needless to say, we're opposed to the rezoning, although there's simply just not enough space to put everything in there. The noise is going to be unbearable, and I'd like to talk about that a little bit. You talk about not putting in a PA system, they've already got one. Back in the fall, when the band was practicing, they have a portable PA system, and I sit in my living, excuse me, in my den with all the windows closed, all the doors closed, and I hear the band director says, "Well, that's better this time. Let's try it one more time," and giving marching directions. I ask them to turn it down, they did not. I called the police twice, and they said that there's nothing they could do unless it was after hours. So the PA system's already there. The other thing that really has me up in arms about is there, the way it's oriented, the end zone next to Adjour is going to be so close to the brick wall that about 30 feet at the closest point, that they will actually be kicking footballs onto Adjour Road. But their solution is to put up a 40-foot tall net to catch the footballs. So every time I back out of my driveway, that's what I'm going to be seeing, a 40-foot net. The other thing is that the bleachers, and this is something that we really don't have firm numbers on even though we have asked. The bleachers are going to be somewhere between, well, between the fence, excuse me, between the field and the fence of one of our neighbor's houses at 75 feet. There are bleachers behind that, so as best we can figure, there's probably going to be 30 to 40, maybe 50 feet at most between the back of the bleachers to the property line of someone's house. They will be 15 feet tall. You'll be able to stand in those bleachers and look inside his house, inside his children's bedroom. That's too close. Again, this is too much to go into, too small of a space. Now, I'd want them to have a great facility, a Class A, but this is just not the place to put it. And I've said that about a year and a half ago in here. They need more space, and it will not fit in there. This will ruin our neighborhood. I ask you that you deny the application, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
My name is Frank Hart. I live in the Heathwood neighborhood. And this kind of feels, have y'all seen the movie Groundhog Day? I mean, how many times do we have to come up here and say the same thing to get this thing denied? First of all, they got a beautiful new school there. In 2003, I was on the Heathwood Board, and we fought for our side, they fought for their side. They say we don't want to compromise, but we already compromised. How many houses did they take away from the neighborhood when they, they took 20-some houses away from the neighborhood already? So what we want is what they agreed to originally. We all want Dreher, everybody in this room wants Dreher to have athletic fields. We just don't want to have them in our neighborhood. So I would ask you to deny this request.
Thank you.
My name is Foster Hazelton. I've been here twice before, so I'll be brief. I live at 827 Adjour Road, which is right next to Dreher, so I border on two sides. I'm also here on behalf of my neighbor, Michael Roberts, who lives on the other side, so he borders Dreher on two sides. He's in Afghanistan, you might remember him, he spoke previously, he's an Army captain, helicopter pilot, but he asked me to speak on his behalf as well. I, I think everyone knows my history with Dreher, I'm a huge Dreher family, I love Dreher, I was a '96 graduate, I played soccer, my brother played football, my sister played tennis. We lived in Heathwood, so we chose to not go to AC Flora so we could go to Dreher because of our family connection to Dreher. I have two young sons, I have a two-and-a-half-year-old and a one-year-old. Michael has a two-and-a-half-year-old girl and a boy coming in May. Our biggest concern, which has never been addressed in these proposed or these presumed compromises, is the bleachers. You're looking at six, they say that we bleachers are 600 people. This current configuration, I argue, is worse because, first off, the sun is, you're staring directly into the sun as you're trying to go to that end zone, the one near the animal clinic, but the bleachers will be so tall and so close to our property lines that you will be able to stare directly, not just into our backyards, but into our homes. And any sense of privacy or safety for our children is eviscerated. I would argue that it's not a stretch to say that for Michael and I, if, with those stands are built like that, just with the noise as well, as well as the sightlines, it makes our home pretty much unlivable for us with these two, you know, four young children that live right there. I do want to note about those compromises, I have never once been contacted by anybody from the Booster Club or the school. I know Michael has not either. I don't know of any neighbors who are contiguous to Dreher that have been contacted. I did attend every one of the community meetings. I would argue those aren't really meetings, they're more lectures as we were told what we're supposed to live with. No one's ever asked me what, you know, from my input, I only get to do here. The last thing I'll say about Hammond, that's an apples-to-orange comparison. The last thing I'll say about Hammond, that's an apples-to-orange comparison. Hammond is a hundred and nineteen acres. It's a total student body, I believe, is about eight hundred and fifty, and that's starting at pre-K, all of the way through twelfth grade, so it's good, that's also private school, this is going to be on public land, it's going to get a massive amount of usage.
Thank you.
I appreciate it, and hope you all will vote against.
Thank you.
I have a quick question for the applicant, if I may. If my memory serves me correct, did the school district make a tremendous investment in Memorial Stadium for Drea to be able to play football there in the recent two years?
We are making one now, yes.
How much has that been?
That is under construction.
What was the?
I believe that is about a four to five million-dollar project.
Okay, thank you.
I have a quick question, too. Were you there in two thousand and three?
I was.
You were, okay. Thank you.
Could I, I have a question. When you made your first presentation, did you not say that this would just be a practice field?
That is the intent, for it to be a practice field.
Seems like there's been a misconception, because everybody that's come up that's against it is, is thinking it's going to, there are going to be football games played there.
We have said in the past that we were looking to have JV games there, but we realize with, with the lighting that may not be able to do that, so it's our intent to put a field that can be used for practice.
So is it a game field or a practice field? I think that's important.
Well, it's, it's our intent to use it for competition, a game field, for those sports where we can, can get the game in within the associated daylight time. We know that we can't have anything after dark because we're not going to put any lights What we have said from the beginning was that it was not intended to be used for varsity football games because we know that they bring out large crowds. However, with some of the soccer, lacrosse, and other, other type sports, we know that they don't carry the same number of people as those other sports.
Ask, why in two thousand and three you agreed to this restriction?
In two thousand and three, if you read the PUD, that is what we agreed to. And in that PUD, it allows for changes to be made to the PUD. We went, in the original plan, we, we went to, to make a revision to the PUD, which would require us to sit down with all of the community and to go through that process. During that, we were directed that we could not continue to use the PUD, but we had to move to another zoning requirement, and that's what we were directed to do, and that's what we did. So we've tried to follow all the rules that have been set before us, but in that PUD, the language itself allows for revisions to be made.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask if others would like to come forward to the podium now.
Good evening. I'm Jim Reed. I live in Columbia. There's an important point about the Drea proposal that has been somewhat overlooked, although it just came up now, but I feel this needs to be reemphasized. I've attended multiple meetings where it has been said by the school district, there would be competitive events at this stadium. So if that's changed, this is something new as of right now. The proposed facilities are not just for practices. They are also for unlimited competitive games and athletic events. The tennis courts will have lights. There's a huge difference between practices and games. A practice is one team preparing for a game, while games are two teams competing to win. Fans don't attend practices. There are no bleachers at a practice field. Fans do attend games. These fans make as much noise as possible to support their team. Actually, it's quite normal at an event for cheerleaders to urge fans to make more noise, to get loud. The noise levels at games are many, many times louder than practices. Drea's proposal is to build a competition football stadium and competition tennis courts. These facilities also bring the loud noise that comes with games and matches. Do not allow surrounding neighborhoods to be ruined with excessive noise, traffic, and overall disruption caused by unlimited competitive games and athletic events. I urge you once again, for the third time.
Thank you.
Please vote against this.
Good evening. My name's Fred Easley. I'm president of the Melrose Neighborhood Association. Glad to be here in front of you guys again. It is, one of the things that we're really concerned about with our neighborhood and our neighbors, as you heard specifically spoken before, is in regard to the lights on the tennis courts. I've asked about that several times, and we have not been able to get the information related to the tennis courts as far as specifics about how tall the lights will be, how many foot candles they're going to have on there. These will be competition tennis courts. And I went to AC Flora and took a video, looked over there, and there was a tremendous amount of light bleed-off coming from those over there, and they actually only had five poles that were working. And I believe we are not seeing a, a site plan that is an actual plan. What we're having to work with here are, in essence, concepts, so we're, we don't have anything really to, to base factually on how much light will be placed into our neighbors' homes that are on Michigan Street and at specifically Michael Roberts' house. He is going to be closest to the tennis courts. The thing I would bring up about the tennis courts is I have an article from the state newspaper that is, let me see, dated May the first of two thousand and fifteen, and in here, it actually talks about where Mr. Carlin said the proposal calls for locating the tennis courts at Drea if possible, although Memorial Stadium is an alternate site. And then it goes down further and then talks about Drea with the information with the tennis courts at Memorial. And so, this is from two thousand and fifteen, so clearly, things have changed from two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and eighteen. Now, the courts are going to be there, they're not necessarily, I'm out of time. Thank you, I appreciate it. I'd like to leave this for your review, just to leave it here.
I think one of the issues, I have a question for staff, is, this is a zoning approval, correct?
Correct.
And so, whatever the zoning requirements call for, if we approve this, that's what it has to, has to meet, I mean, it falls into these, these items that we've been given.
Right, and like Brian mentioned before, you know, this particular use would need a special exception, so then all those things would be worked out as a special exception at the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Okay, all right. Any other?
Good evening. My name is Wilmet Irvin, and my wife and I and our ten-year-old son live at seven-twenty Albion Road, just a block away from this project and from Drea High School. I graduated from Drea in nineteen sixty-eight. When we negotiated to buy the home that we live in now, Drea was at that time constructing the new, the new building and the wall around the new structure. And we inquired about that because it was going to be a block away from our home, and it was our understanding from talking with folks, I remember talking to my friend Hamilton Osborne, who at that time was on city council, that there had been an agreement reached that this would be all that would be done at Drea. And based on that, we went forward, and I'm glad we did. We love living there. Now, I was here, I've been here for every hearing, I've spoken at some of them, and at one of the hearings, a very nice lady, very articulately from, from Drea, made the point that we should teach our children the importance of compromise. Now, I get that. I'm, I'm a lawyer, I've been in litigation for forty-plus years, I understand about compromise. And what she said about teaching our children the importance of that meant something to me, but more importantly, I want to teach my ten-year-old to honor the agreements that he makes, and that's what we're asking be done here. Drea, the school district, made an agreement, and they should honor that agreement.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Nancy Barxdale. I live in the Melrose neighborhood, two blocks north of Drea. I'm opposed to this application. It's important to note that not one person on the school board lives anywhere near Drea High School. So why should they be allowed to impose excessive noise generating competition sports facilities on my neighbors and me? These are our homes. These are our neighborhoods. No neighborhood should ever have such extreme changes imposed on it by people who don't even live there. This planning commission wisely denied the school district's previous requests. This application needs to be stopped now. You can help the neighborhoods to impede the advancement of this application to BOZA by denying it yet again tonight. Thank you for your support.
Hello, my name is John Bruton. I live at thirty-two-eleven Michigan Street. As you probably know, Michigan Street is a quiet road comprised of mostly small, affordable houses for young families. Our, my neighbors and I have respective front yards, are about fifty feet away from Drea's campus. As such, I think it's for good reason that the residents of Michigan Street are concerned about the specter of living next to a, a football stadium and the associated visual impact and noise impact that'll accompany that. When I bought my house in two thousand and sixteen, I did it with the intent that my wife and I would live there for the indefinite future. However, had I known about this proposed plan, I never would have bought that house. And if the stadium's ultimately developed, I most, I would strongly consider selling my house, perhaps at a loss. And therefore, I respectfully request that you vote against the proposed plan. And for the record, I note that both my mother and my sister graduated from Drea and played tennis at Drea, and my family's been a supporter of Drea Athletics over the years. Thank you very much.
My name is Joshua Shelton. I live at eleven-thirteen Fairview Drive in Melrose Heights, the neighborhood that's behind Drea High School. I think a lot of you probably picked up on there's a loss of trust between the surrounding neighborhoods and Drea High School through bad history. So when the school board and the school come to us today and change the plan, give us a new plan tonight, with generalities and their intent, it's probably obvious to you that we don't believe that they would honor that, especially based on the history. But you may be familiar, but Melrose Heights is a historic neighborhood, federally registered. One of the things that attracted us to Melrose Heights, and one thing I'd like you to consider is future homeownership of Melrose Heights and the surrounding neighborhoods for younger families. This is the third young family that's come up tonight. We love Melrose Heights because it's a quiet neighborhood, central in the city. Definitely increasing noise or light pollution in Drea would detract the livability of the neighborhood and the homes that surround it, so I'd ask you to vote no to this proposed. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Dina Phillips. I live on Deveraux, which is one street north of, of Michigan. I have an upcoming ninth grader next year. He will be attending Drea. He did not choose Drea because of the sports program. He chose Drea because of the academics and because of the band. I am a concerned neighbor, and I am vehemently opposed to this plan for the following reasons. This change will negatively impact our neighborhoods, which I think has been pretty well covered here. We understand that the removal of the PUD takes away all of our protections, so whenever you rezone this, the district can pretty much do whatever they want, and we've seen that they've changed their plan many times. They haven't communicated that very well to the neighbors, so we have no idea what the current plan looks like. So once the zoning is done, it's done as far as we're concerned. This zoning change is being proposed by Richland One and by the Shandon Athletic Booster Club. If they want a sports facility that rivals AC Flora's, then A, they should build it on a, on a property that has as much space as AC Flora's, and B, they should build it in their backyard and not mine. If you want it that badly, put it in your backyard. The streets surrounding Drea High School are not compatible with the increased traffic. When I asked the district staff about their plan to ameliorate that traffic, they said there would be no need for that because there wouldn't be extra traffic. If there's no extra traffic, then why are you building bleachers? If you're not playing competitive sports, then why do you have bleachers and lights at all if this is just a practice field? There are insufficient parking spaces, which is also a concern for the neighbors. So, thank you.
My name is Martha Fowler. I'm the fourth generation in my house in Melrose. My children could have gone to Flora, they went to Drea, they went to Drea because of academics. It's a great school, it's a fabulous school. I want them to have everything that they can have, as long as it's the right choice. This is not the right choice. We have asked, they say that they've made compromises for us, they have not reached out to talk to any of us. I question why you need a six-hundred-seat set of bleachers for a practice field. We've asked for a traffic study, the traffic study has not, they've told us it's not needed. We feel like it's needed. You're changing, or if this were to be accepted, it would be changing the quality of life in our neighborhood, and we're asking you to not do that. Please consider us as a neighborhood. We've, we've already given up twenty-six houses. Where are these, where are these six-hundred people that are going to sit in these bleachers going to park? Drea has a basketball arena, it has a theater. If all of those are being used at the same time, where are all these people going to park? Are they going to park on Ajour, or are they going to park on Michigan Street? None of this makes any sense, and no, they haven't reached out to ask, to answer our questions or to ask for our input. We would like to be asked our input. I asked if I could help them, and I was explained how to use a smartphone, like I was some dummy that didn't understand how one worked. We're not a bunch of dummies. Please pay attention to us and ask our opinion, or at least value what we're saying. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any others who would like to come up prior to us making a motion?
Good evening. My name is Sam Waters, and I'm co-president with my wife Mary of the Heathwood, Star Heathwood Neighborhood Association. I come before you in opposition to this plan, and I want to just hit on a couple of points and not repeat what you've already heard. I've, I've been moved by the different statements that we've heard from the neighborhood as to the impact of what a change could mean. But from a legal standpoint, if this zoning change goes through, all of the efforts that were put forth in two thousand and three in a great compromise to have Drea rebuilt where it is with restricted use of the land would go away because Drea would immediately become a non-conforming use in an RS2 zone. That means anything they do has to be done by way of exception before the Board of Zoning Appeals. And I can assure you, members of the panel, that city council does not want to yield that decision to the Board of Zoning Appeals because they want to have some heart to play in this so that there can be somewhat of a win-win situation. That's not going to happen with the zoning change. Let me address another point. Let me address another point. The PUD does allow for change, but it requires the approval of you. You must approve changes under the PUD. Mr. Perkins forgot to mention that. So if you were to approve of a change of zoning, we lose the PUD. If it goes to City Council and is upheld there, we lose the PUD. We lose all the efforts that went into putting that together in a very concise and creative way to make this a livable neighborhood with Drear. Thank you very much.
Anyone else want to come forward before I ask for a motion? Okay. I'd like to ask...
First, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out and speaking. I'm going to make a motion to deny the request to return the parcel from a planned unit development commercial district to a single-family residential RS2.
Have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Mr. Stern's motion is approved.
No, it's not. The agreement is the agreement. In the world we're in, and we're in the world we're in, if you agree to bring it.
There's nothing preventing them to go to Board of Zoning Appeals. I mean, just don't resent them. Just go to Boza and add them to...
We are still in session. We are still in session. Thank you. Can we go to the next item, please?
Your next item this evening is number six on the agenda. It is 1908 Blossom Street. It is to rezone the parcel from Light Industrial District with the five points overlay. That would be M1 with the 5P to a mixed-use district with the five points overlay, which would be the MX1 with the 5P overlay. The applicant is here.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Due to my company's association with this property, I will need to recuse myself from conversation and vote.
Okay. Mr. Waits is recusing himself. He's already filled out the proper paperwork as well. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, would the applicant like to come forward, please?
Good evening. My name is Scott Lambert with Lambert Architecture and Construction Services. We appreciate the opportunity to present the project to you tonight, and I apologize my voice is kind of in and out, a little cold going on. Simply, a quick summary, we're requesting a rezoning of two parcels at 1908 Blossom Street from M1, which is Light Industrial, that's the current zoning, to MX1. We have met with the city folks several times, probably three or four different times, to review this project and the overall scope. I think we're in agreeance with them that the MX1 is consistent with the future land use plan, as well as the future five concept for that area of lower five points. In addition to meeting with the city folks, we've also met over the past month or so with the Wales Garden neighborhood on November 27th, as well as the Five Points Association. Although there has been concerns raised on the project, which I'm sure you'll hear tonight, I think overall, the item that we're really here tonight is talking about the M1 conversion to MX1 zoning, and I don't believe that we've heard any real opposition to the zoning aspect of this project, which is why we're here tonight. Again, as we would move forward with the project, assuming that it were to be approved, there's many other steps, as you're well aware. A special exception is next up on the agenda for us, as well as the overall site plan approval and development plan. So again, the reason we're here tonight is relative to the zoning. Open any questions you may have.
You want to put a restaurant on the property? Is that correct?
Yes, sir. There's currently four parcels. Two are M1 and two are currently MX1 that the landowner owns all four of those parcels. We want to put all four of those ultimately together and consolidate it and follow all the zoning guidelines relative to that MX1 by putting a restaurant on it, yes.
Any questions for the applicant?
Are all four of the parcels that are going to be developed, currently developed with commercial space, are there any residential or anything of that nature?
They're vacant on all four. I'm sorry. No, there is one building on part of one that would come down. It's actually the one connected to the optometrist.
So this was the old Master Cleaners site, correct?
That's correct.
There's nothing there now.
Yes, so the Master Cleaners has been torn down. There's a little sliver of a building that you probably wouldn't even think is on one of these parcels. It's actually attached to the other building that would come down, and that would be part of ultimately the planning for the site development is to move the drive. Just to give you a little insight, move the drive as far away from the railroad truss as possible to get to the drive, but that would be the entrance drive going into the parcel. But again, the real intent here is that we would get the M1s to MX1s and then continue the development of the project.
I have a question for staff. Other than a zoning and a special exception at Boza approval, are they required to come back to this body for a site plan approval? Based on its zoning district, if it's overlay district?
The site plan usually... What triggers site plan before planning commission is if it's a building over 100,000 square feet, or if it has more than five residential dwellings. So in this particular case, it would not come back to planning commission for site plan. However, it does have to go through design review, which does include the site and the building because it would be in the five points overlay district. So it would be the DDRC that would be reviewing the aesthetics and landscaping and all that.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any guests who would like to come forward and speak about this today?
I'm Toby Ward, and I am a local attorney, and I also have my law practice in the immediate area. I'm on the corner of Congaree and Blossom. I rent that office, but my wife and her partner, Richard Burts, own the property. I've had a substantial amount of involvement with this part of Five Points. My wife and her partner own some other property as well. We are concerned that this proposed rezoning breaks a pledge that has existed for many years between the City of Columbia and the residents who live in Wales Garden, Hollywood Hills, and Shandon, that is across Blossom Street. And that pledge was that the sale of alcohol would not cross Blossom into those residential areas. This rezoning, while it doesn't technically raise that question, will lead to that result. For that reason, I am adamantly opposed to the rezoning request and would certainly ask that those members of the planning commission, you have a difficult decision, but I would ask you to keep the trust that has existed between the City of Columbia and the residents of this area and not use this hard question to work a hardship on those residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come forward?
Good evening. My name is Judy Holliday. I have lived on Waukamaw Avenue since we bought our home in 1986. We love and welcome the diversity of our residents in Wales Garden. We have young families raising children, college students who are with us but a few years, and older folks who want to age in place. However, we're seeing the friendly spirit of our community threatened by a changing culture in Five Points. Over the past decade, Five Points has rightfully gained a reputation for late-night partying that has attracted more and more criminals who prey on young people. I know you've read the newspapers and seen the statistics that show the rise of violent crime and alcohol-related arrests. In the meantime, Waukamaw Avenue has become a parade ground for noisy drunk pedestrians, stumbling home in the dark morning hours, strewing empty beer cans, whiskey bottles, and plastic cups on our sidewalks and in our yards. My neighbors and I have noticed an increase of missing lawn and porch furnishings, along with smashed car windows occasionally and scratched automobiles. Since the first cocktail was sold in Five Points in 1973, the number of bars has been growing in Five Points. But up to now, the bars have remained inside the geographic retail village to the north of Blossom Street. Today, an out-of-state proprietor wants to rezone, land a budding Wales Garden, to make way for a restaurant with a bar menu offering 30 hurricane drinks, 19 shooters, 11 bomb shots.
Thank you.
My name is Kit Smith, and I live at 206 Water Re Avenue. You can look at this in a very narrow way and look at zoning lines on a map, and perhaps to some of us, it might make sense to sort of clean up zoning in that area if our rezoning administrator might even recommend it to you. But I think it is your duty to look beyond that. The mission of the planning commission is fourfold. One of them is to enhance the quality of life, to help businesses, to enhance the integrity of neighborhoods, and to protect the environment. This project fails on three out of the four. It does nothing to enhance the quality of life for our community. It does nothing to enhance the environment, which sits in a floodway, to pave more property in that area without due thought to the flood hazard we already have in Five Points, and it does nothing to enhance the integrity of our neighborhoods. Under South Carolina state law, in order to be called yourself a restaurant, you have to serve food. There's no such thing as a bar under South Carolina law. You get a liquor license, you serve food, you're a restaurant. This restaurant will be open to 2:00 in the morning, and it will very well may morph into one of the all-night bars that we now have. Eighteen in Five Points now, over 30 alcohol outlets there now. This would be the first time that an alcohol outlet, under South Carolina law, if they apply for a license, and they intend to, would be on our side of Blossom Street. The question that I would ask you to ask yourselves is to look at that map, look at where it's located, adjacent to a neighborhood, residences back up to it. Under South Carolina law, you can't be next to a playground, but you can be next to a house that has four children in it. If you would live in that house, then vote yes. I think that none of us would want to buy a property and live with a wall separating us from a restaurant or a bar. Thank you.
Anyone else want to come forward?
My name's Dick Harpitlian. I live at 228 St. James. I walk by that lot every morning with my dog. Currently, we're being confronted at 6:00 in the morning with drunk kids coming out of Five Points. Hopefully, City Council in the next three or four weeks will repeal the 2:00 a.m. ordinance and stop some of that traffic. The important thing to understand is this, and I was president of Shandon Neighborhood Council in 1979, and I thought I had fought the fights for neighborhoods and I was done with that. It is worse now than it was in '79. The problem is, some people see Five Points as a pure profit center, as a place they can make money, not a place for us to live, or walk our dogs, or raise our children. The decision you're going to make tonight is about whether you're going to... And I'm sure, and we've met with the gentleman that bought this property, he bought it without it being rezoned, without talking to the neighborhood, without getting any input whatsoever. And if he did that without any input from us, we believe that that will follow through after, if you were to allow this to go forward. There are establishments that can locate there under the current zoning. He can market it for that. It doesn't have to be changed so that a restaurant... And by the way, his menu shows they serve, and he's proud of this, I said at the meeting with the neighborhood, 50 hurricane drinks. He said, "Oh, no, we serve more than that." That was his response. We don't want alcohol. We don't want this kind of establishment. And again, Master Cleaners was there for 30 years. I used to drop my clothes off there in the morning and pick them up in the afternoon every day, and I did that for 20 years, 30 years. So in conclusion, let me say this to you. We, Kit Smith and I, we've built... Our families have built houses in the last four years in that neighborhood because we want to live in this neighborhood.
Thank you.
I have a question for staff. Currently in M1, you can have a restaurant. And so I'm struggling a little bit, just simply because of the zoning for the development of the end use that they're being required to get a zoning change for. Scott, I think Scott's jumping up. I mean, as I... I'm familiar with M1. You can do restaurants and alcohol in M1. I'm struggling to understand the differentiation here.
You can, but you cannot build across zoning district boundary lines.
That's what's holding this up.
Yes.
Yes, as I mentioned earlier, there's four different parcels.
And this is for two of the four, correct?
That's correct. Right. So in order to really meet all the Five Points goals, which is to move the building close to the property line and create that feeling for the development, it's important for us to be able to pick up those two parcels. And also, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but we'd have to get... We're all going for a special exception, but if they're different parcels, we can't consolidate them. So then it would create a whole other level to trying to bridge across two different zonings for the parking.
My name is Coles Lawton. I was president of Wales Garden in April 2008, and we adopted historic guidelines and became an architectural conservation district almost 10 years ago. We worked hard for years to achieve these guidelines, to help maintain our property values by protecting the beautiful aesthetic character and history of our neighborhood. I am asking that you do not pass this zoning change because of the consequence of that is a devastating precedent for Wales Gardeners and for all of Columbia downtown neighborhoods who have historic district status. Another consequence of your approval is to make it much harder for us before Boza with special exceptions. What do these overlays mean if they do not protect us? Encroaching development over time can erase unique visual aspects and history. Our overlay is supposed to protect us against erasing our unique character. This project represents outsider development encroachment into the borders of official Wales Garden. Guidelines Section 1 defines our purpose is to protect the beauty of the city and the neighborhood through conserving sites and resisting influences adverse to that purpose. Introducing a commercial parking lot within our border is certainly erasing our history as a historic residential neighborhood and in no way as a contributing asset to the property values or our neighborhood character and beauty. Section 2 defines our principles that residential patterns must be maintained. New development must enhance the existing neighborhood and will be worthy of regard in the future. This application directly conflicts with these two principles. This application directly conflicts with these two principles. The first proposal of commercial paving over --
Thank you.
Hello. Thank you for listening to us. I'm Susie Hayward. I live at 421 Ettestow Avenue. First of all, I want to say that the importance of neighborhoods in this city has somehow become a little less stressed than it used to be. When I was on Planning Commission years ago, one thing we did take into account greatly was neighborhoods, and I hope you still do. The University Hill neighborhood, Martin Luther King, Waverly neighborhood, Lounes Street neighborhood, all support us in opposing this. They want to keep the restrictions and keep the bars out of the neighborhoods and confined into the absolute middle of Five Points, if we have to have them, and since we obviously do. I can't stress enough how important the neighborhoods are. Pride in neighborhoods, pride in your home, is what makes this city great, and I just hope that you'll think about that. That was something that was always stressed to me, and I think that's something that should be a major issue to everyone. The other thing I wanted to address was that the technical issue you have here is that you have a building that wants to straddle two zonings, which I'm sure you've probably been prepped by staff. A building cannot technically be built on two different zoning, and he's asking to rezone to the Five Points zoning so that he can put the building there. If you don't approve this zoning change, that building cannot be built because it will be straddling the MX-1 and the M1. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Carol Hayward. I live at 421 Ettestow Avenue, the spouse of Susie Hayward, who's outlined several of the issues. But I'd like to express, again, my opposition to this zoning change, the reasons that you've previously heard. This is our neighborhood. I'm born and raised here in Columbia, South Carolina. For the last forty-five years, I've lived in Wales Gardens and where I currently live, on Ettestow Avenue. This is my home. This is my grandparents' home. This is an intrusion into our neighborhood which will dramatically -- has the possibility of dramatically changing the dynamics of a residential area. We don't need another bar. It is called a restaurant, certainly, and Kit Smith explained the law on that, but currently it is a bar, and we bear a terrible burden from the crowds and the kids in Five Points. And my apologies to the students at the University of South Carolina, but it's a terrific burden to all of us. This is not the way it was. We don't need to change the zoning to allow this to happen. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Sarah Schwabel, and I didn't intend to speak tonight, but the men presenting their request for rezoning said that they hadn't heard any objections. I want to make sure that they hear objections. Wales Garden and surrounding neighborhoods are just as much neighborhoods as those around Drear, and we too are being greatly affected by the petition presented today. When you look up at the map, it doesn't look like it borders right on a neighborhood. It might look like it's part of a commercial district. But I make a walk past the old site of Master's Cleaners at least twice a day because of the high traffic to the area due to late-night hours of the so-called restaurants that are making their profits via alcohol. In fact, the franchise owner has publicly stated that sixty percent of last year's profits came from alcohol, not from food. As a result, we are dealing with an extensive amount of late, late-night noise, and we are constantly, as neighbors, picking up trash, as that of bottles and glasses, cups that are containing alcohol and being carried to and from the entertainment zone in Five Points. I ask that you protect our neighborhoods. I moved here so I could walk to work, and I could walk to independent coffee shops in Five Points. It's a neighborhood that is really worth preserving.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm Guy Jones, and I am here to oppose this on behalf of the Hollywood Rose Hill Neighborhood Association. We unanimously oppose the zoning change that would allow this project to go forward. And a big part of the reason that we do that is we are the recipient, along with our friends in Wales Garden, of a lot of adverse, negative behavior that is generated from the college bars. My wife and I really enjoy going down and eating in Five Points and drinking responsibly. And another issue that we find with this is the traffic concern of the curve along Blossom Street. That is a serious matter for pedestrian activity, and a college bar like this is bound to generate a lot more pedestrian activity across Blossom Street. As you know, as you drive down Blossom, coming eastbound around the curve, it's a blind curve, and cars just really fly through there. So that presents a real problem for any business that's going to generate pedestrian activity, particularly at night. So we ask that you oppose the zoning change for this project. It's just the wrong project for that spot. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to come up and to the podium?
Good evening. My name is David Anderson. I am -- I serve on the Wales Garden Neighborhood Board as secretary. I also live on Saluda Avenue. And I just wanted to address, yes, we did have a neighborhood meeting in November to hear the Makados people talk about the project. And just to let you know, you've heard the various reasons for opposition to this project, but just to let you know, at that meeting, the entire project is overwhelmingly opposed by our residents. I think that's obvious. And I also wanted to submit several letters of support, one from Hollywood Rose Hill and as well as Waverly, that I can leave right here. Let's see. You know, residents are so opposed for the reasons outlined before. This would be the first bar/restaurant across Blossom Street, and just to amend, nobody wants to see that in the neighborhood. And I guess the bottom line is what we're asking of the Planning Commission is to, you know, value our neighborhood interests as much as you do the business interests. We support a vibrant, thriving Five Points. We support, you know, business success, but we also want to continue to protect our architectural conservation district and looking for a balance in development. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm Jim Daniel. I've actually had the opportunity to visit one of their restaurants in Charlotte. The configuration was very similar to what you see in an Applebee's, Ruby Tuesday. My guesstimate was maybe twenty, twenty-five percent of the building in Charlotte was actually devoted to the bar area, of which I think there were either sixteen or eighteen seats at the bar, and the rest were tables where that's where we had supper. The rest of the building is, at least that one, is configured into a larger area for dining and then a smaller area for dining. So, you know, again, this is a restaurant with a bar. It's not a bar with a restaurant, at least the way I viewed the one in Charlotte. Thank you.
Thank you. Your turn.
I'm a resident of Wales Gardens. I live on Santee Avenue. I also own a business in Five Points, which is a portfolio art gallery. It's not a bar. One of my big concerns about this possibility is that the little triangle where I live, Congaree, Santee, and the point on Waukamaw, we have fourteen children under twelve years old. Several babies, little children ride their bicycles around on that whole triangle where we live. That's just a few steps from where this could be. So I'm opposed, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. I'm sorry. Oh, could you please, excuse me, could you please sign the paper for your name? Thank you. No, we -- We need you to -- you just spoke. We need you to sign, please.
I'm Jane Emerson. I live on Saluda Avenue. I wasn't prepared to speak, but something came out in our Neighborhood Association meeting with the people that want to put this bar in, and I think it's important for you to know that that restaurant can seat a hundred and eighty people, and that doesn't count anybody hanging around the bar and standing. And it's plans to take out an apartment building at the base of Saluda Avenue, which would change completely the residential look of that block. And they're only supposed -- they're only going to provide, they admit this, only thirty-two parking places. So just think about seating a hundred and eighty people with thirty-two parking places. They're going to end up coming up Saluda Avenue.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Michael Drennan. I live in Shandon, and I just want to briefly point out that our objections to rezoning this land is not necessarily just about this particular owner or establishment. It's about the presence of alcohol and an alcohol-serving establishment, of which we have plenty in Five Points. I understand the desire to want to make the zoning here consistent. We don't have to do that tonight. I think it's important to consider the implications of the zoning change and when an appropriate time to make that zoning change is. That's all I had to say. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'll sign in.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. My name is Jim Morris. My wife is sitting over here. She is the, not an optometrist, but she's a board-certified ophthalmologist that owns 2020 Vision. It's that, the other building that's on that corner. I think there's probably other options here without getting into the alcohol piece, but no one has, unless my wife can disagree, I don't believe anybody has really come and talked to her, and she's right in the center of it. So I think there are a lot of other options that this property could be turned into, but just like to consider that, that they have not really been explored. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. It looks like everyone's come forward, so I'd like to ask for a, if there's any further discussion. I'd like to ask for a motion, please.
The applicant did submit it, and they've deferred to have those conversations. So, I mean, if you'd like to defer that, that's up to you, but you'd have to ask either side of the party what conversations they have yet to have.
I would like them to defer it so when they come back, they can show all four pieces. They said there were four pieces of property, and it's hard to tell what, where those four are.
And just to set the record straight, regarding the Makados as a restaurant, I didn't get into a large explanation. I grew up in one of Makados. I grew up in Roanoke, Virginia. That's what they're based out of. I grew up there. They also have a place in Blacksburg, where I went to college at Virginia Tech. It's a family restaurant. I know there's this whole spin about trying to call it a bar. Every person that gets up calls it a bar. They have gone back just recently and looked at the accounting on the company. About twenty-one percent of their total sales out of seventeen restaurants is alcohol sales. So apparently, a lot of people are experts on Makados, but they don't know anything about Makados. And Mr. Daniel's the only one that's actually been to the restaurant other than myself, probably, you know, unless you guys have. I think there's definitely a spin to call this a bar over and over again, but that's not the case. And the percentage that you spoke of is very consistent with this one. We're about, I think it's about twenty percent or less, closer to fifteen percent of the seating is relative.
Hold on. You need, he has the podium right now.
I just have a question.
Well, you'll have time. No.
Could you say fifteen percent of the bar area, of the floor plan area is bar, and twenty-one percent of their sales is alcohol?
Excuse me? Okay.
Yes.
All right. It's your turn with the podium. If you would like to come up and question that, you may.
Yeah, I've stated our position on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, but I went to the meeting, the neighborhood meeting, and the owner told us that the profit from alcohol sales from Makados was sixty-five percent alcohol sales.
Who's Makados?
Pardon?
That's the name of the restaurant?
Makados is the name of the franchise that he says is like Applebee's. But I don't think Applebee's gets a sixty-five percent profit margin off of alcohol.
We got a whole order. She has the mic, please. We're doing well. Let's keep it that way tonight.
I'm trying to follow the procedure, but I can't sit in my seat when they're telling you something different from what they tell you.
No, no, we have to follow procedure. You're doing fine.
Well, I want to follow procedure.
You have the mic, you have the podium, the lights going.
I just want you to know that, that's all.
Okay. Thank you. Did you sign in previously? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I didn't mean to be rude. I just wanted to clarify for the record since this gentleman spoke. At the Wales Garden Neighborhood Meeting, he told us that eighty percent of the profit was from beer and wine. And I might also just comment that as to whether you're a restaurant or a bar is left up to the determination of the zoning administrator under local law. And our zoning administrator spends a lot of time in court trying to close down a drinking establishment because it's a restaurant that has morphed into a bar. That's what we see happening over and over again. And technically, it is a restaurant, but a lot of jurisdictions say that if you're open after eleven o'clock, that's the definition they use in a lot of cities, you're a bar. You don't go in and order lunch at 2:00 a.m. So we would submit to you that this is a restaurant, but if it's going to be open at two o'clock in the morning with a four-page menu of drinks, it's also a bar. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, we're still at a motion. We're in the middle, we're in the middle of a motion.
I was going to ask the question. Can you make it from the floor?
A motion? No.
I'd like to make a motion to defer, let the applicant have more time to speak with the neighbors and maybe come to some kind of compromise.
Do I have a second? Second. Any further discussion? Has the, before we vote, has the neighborhood already met with the applicant?
Yes.
How many times? Once. We're in a motion. No, I can't let -- No, I can't let you speak right now. All right, I'll call for a vote. The motion has been made to defer, defer to the next meeting, and there has been a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All oppose?
Aye.
Aye. Let's do a person vote. Individual vote.
Yep. Mr. Tupper?
Aye.
Mrs. Stigemeyer?
I vote no.
Ms. Hartz?
No.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Cohn?
No.
Mr. Stern?
Aye.
Ms. James?
No.
Mr. Waite's abstaining, and Mr. Frost?
No.
You have three yeses and five noes, so it fails.
It fails, so now we need a new motion on the, to vote on the item, which is number six, EMA two zero one seven dash zero zero one two.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we deny the recommendation of rezoning.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor of denying motion to rezone signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
No.
Opposed.
Do an individual vote again.
Mr. Tupper?
Aye.
Mr. Stigemeyer?
No.
Ms. Hartz?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Cohn?
Aye.
Mr. Stern?
Aye.
Ms. James?
No.
And Mr. Frost?
No.
Five to three, the motion passes.
The motion passes five to three. No, 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 no applauding, please. No applauding. Okay. We still have one more item to do. Thank you. Yes, sir. We're ready.
Item number seven on today's agenda is fourteen hundred U.G. Street. It is to rezone the parcel from Office and Institutional District Design Development Area C1 to the Light Industrial Design Development District M1 DD. So that's C1 DD to M1 DD. The applicant is here, if you have any questions.
Yes, if the applicant would like to come to the podium.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Brad Wolf, Director of Development with nine oh eight group. I hear you have questions. Would you like me to give you a run-through before you guys ask away, or you want to ask some questions first?
We'll let you explain what you're going to do, and then we'll.
Sounds good. So we're here for the rezoning of fourteen hundred U.G. Street from C1 to M1. And as I said, I think most of you know, we're purchasing both fourteen hundred U.G. and thirteen twenty-eight U.G. from the county. Thirteen twenty-eight U.G. is a two-point-seven acre parcel currently zoned M1. Fourteen hundred U.G. is the adjacent, adjoining parcel that's zoned C1. Smaller parcel, that's one-point-eight acres, that we're requesting the rezoning from C1 to M1 so that we can develop it as one contiguous use. That use which we want to develop it as is off-campus student housing apartments. So we would utilize the private dormitory ordinance within M1, which allows you to build one-hundred-and-fifty beds per acre of student housing. So as it sits on thirteen hundred and twenty-eight U.G., which already has M1, we could build those student apartments by right. C1 needs the rezoning to M1 for us to build on that parcel as well. And that's what, nine oh eight group, that's what we do. We're exclusively multifamily developers, building Class A student housing across the southeast. And I can get more into the project if people have questions, but I think at this juncture, it's more specific to the rezoning. And I know staff is recommending denial of the rezoning because M1 allows other uses like light industrial and such. And we understand and agree that industrial is not consistent with this area. And we would propose to develop this as multifamily and not industrial. And I think a little bit of the issue with the code is that the only option for us to do the private dormitory ordinance is within M1. So we don't have any other option within the code to do private dormitory other than the rezoning from C1 to M1. So that's why we think it makes the most sense. So understand, staff looking as, as a whole, what you need to do with the rezoning, but I want everybody to observe the fact of what we plan to do and why we're asking for it. And also, we've met with several neighborhood associations. The Vista Neighborhood Association, which I think many of them are here tonight. I've contacted the director of the Vista Guild and spoke with her a couple of times, and reached out to the Arsenal Hill Neighborhood Association as well, but haven't been able to get into contact with them. I know the Vista Neighborhood Association is not going to support the project, and I've heard large concern from them about, you know, potential public improvements and public infrastructure that isn't there on the connection from Pulaski Street to Lady and Gervais, and that bringing a lot of new residents into this area, there needs to be infrastructure improvements. And agree with that from their standpoint. And I know we can't commit to it now because we're so early in the process, but if we're successful in this rezoning and get to the DDRC process, we will commit to public improvements, you know, wider than normal sidewalks, proper lighting, even if we have to go beyond our parcel down to Lady Street. You know, we're committed to working with the city so that we have proper public infrastructure. And doing whatever traffic studies we need to do, I know that's another concern of theirs, even though student housing, I think, would have less traffic than conventional market rate and such. But that's another point. But yeah, so we want to be community partners. We've been working with the neighborhood associations from the very preliminary stages of this, and want to continue to work with them if we can go through this here. Also, the current use is an abandoned building, a county building. If you walk by there, you'll see homeless people living in it. So it'd be nice to have this property redeveloped. And as I understand, it's the city's goal to build towards the river and bring connectivity to the river, and that's what we're trying to help the city do and you guys do. And as I also understand, a lot of developers have tried and are currently developing to try and merge the gap between the river and requesting public funding and such. That's something I wanted to point out, we're not going to do. And, you know, we're planning on building this on our own dime and want to, you know, help improve the city and the Vista area here. So yeah, I mean, with all that being said, I also understand from the staff that the planning staff does want to see medium and high-density residential here, and that's what we're planning to do. So I hope people can get past the fact that M1 allows other uses and try and focus on what, what we're going to develop that will be here for quite some time.
Thank you. So you're saying at C1, and C1, I'll ask staff this question. They can't build what they want to build, they have to go to M1.
Correct. The use that they want to do, they cannot do in C1. In addition, on the screen that you see above you, or in front of you, that M1 is the gray to the south. So again, this is very similar to another case you had this evening where they actually have two zonings on the, the parcels that they want to develop. So again, they can't, you know, cross that zoning line. So they'd like to make their development that they have in one zoning district.
Well, I know you have good intentions with your idea, but all the items that could happen and all the time that could pass over a fifteen- or twenty-year period, there's a variety of different uses that could go in here that are concerning.
Understandable. And I think I already pointed out, too, as it sits on the larger parcel, we can develop student housing as is. And so if we did that, the smaller parcel that stayed C1, you know, would be a sliver that's hard to develop and kind of an outlier piece of property.
But there are uses for that.
Mm-hmm.
There are uses. Any questions for the applicant? Anybody have a question? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any guests that would like to come forward?
Good evening. My name is Bart Walrath. I'm a resident and homeowner in the Vista. I'm on the Board of Directors for the Vista Neighborhood Association, and I'm president of an organization of owners of fifty-seven condominiums directly across the street from the proposed development. I'm opposed to rezoning to allow high-density student dormitory. And the explanation I had is they want this student dormitory so they can build four bedrooms per core unit and get more people into this dormitory so that a total, they applied for a total of seven-hundred-and-twenty-five residents, which is much bigger than all the other student housing being built, that has been built. But I, my concerns, I don't think student housing, I'm not sure it's, it's needed. We've had a bunch, an abundance of projects, some still in construction. Existing student housing that was there before a lot of the building is experiencing higher vacancy rates. So my first question is, why do we need to change the zoning for high-density student, student housing? And does the market have the capacity to absorb it? The, as Brad mentioned, the, the effect of a seven-hundred-and-twenty-five-bed dormitory in the Vista neighborhood, surrounding Vista Neighborhood, has not been adequately evaluated. The pedestrian traffic going across Gervais from a site that has no sidewalks on either of the roads and moped, automobile.
Thank you.
Sure, sorry.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, I'm Richard Rowe, and I serve as the president of the Vista Neighborhood Association. And I'd just like to say that my wife and I have lived in the Vista now for eleven years. We've enjoyed a life in Columbia that's really been very nice, it's been cordial, and we've been seeing the growth that's taken place in the Vista itself. Another student residential building or complex is not what the Vista needs. We are a historical neighborhood and an art district. We are evolving with an array of homes, apartments, art centers, artists, museums, businesses, and we are certainly in need of more retail. Vista needs to continue with the kind of diversity and not more student beds. What that does is allow part-time residents that come in, stay for a school year, leave for three months, come back for another nine months, and they're gone again. The Vista Neighborhood Association, and we have about seventeen residents here tonight, met on the twenty-fourth of January and discussed what the residents would like to have in the Vista. It is not another student residential complex. There are at least five other like facilities that you heard Bart talk about within a mile of this particular piece of property. We don't need this on Pulaski and U.G. Street. I have personally been involved in walking the streets, cleaning up trash, seeking ways to improve our neighborhood so we have streets and sidewalks that are safe and easy to get around. I will conclude by saying our residents do not want increased density and increase in height on this site. We want a design development contributing to a gateway to the river for the Vista.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Quick question for staff. As a clarification here, regardless of the decision that this commission makes, that on, on, on pieces of this land, they can develop student housing, correct?
Yes, on the map that's on your screen, the area that's C1, that has the blue hatch, is the part that's being rezoned. But right to the south of that on the map, that M1, that would allow private student dormitories on that M1, with some other steps they have to go through.
Can I ask, can I ask the applicant a question? The hub, how many students are in the hub? Do you know right offhand? Eight, eight, eight-hundred-and-thirty? I got to tell you, when, before the hub was student housing, I was very apprehensive about converting to, to student housing. But I got to say, I mean, Main Street is as vibrant as it's been in a long time. We got four or five new restaurants, a bowling alley now, proposed grocery store.
I, I would have to agree. I mean, I think that, I don't want to just give the hub all the credit, but I think that they maybe are responsible for single-handedly revitalizing Main Street. So I think it's been a drastic improvement over there.
Great, here, and one important point that I forgot to mention previously that I wanted to point out, like I focused on, you know, staff's hesitance, is the potential other uses that could be developed here. If this parcel is zoned to M1, it could be industrial and such. But I think the fact of the matter is that industrial is not economically feasible on this parcel of land due to land price alone. So that's just naturally not going to happen. So the highest and best use is what we're trying to develop here, which will be multifamily. So again, understand the hesitance and agree with staff that industrial doesn't fit here. Just wanted to point that out as well.
So your, your C1 piece that you want to change to M1 is the small piece that I'm looking at?
Correct.
But if, if we didn't approve that, you could still build your student housing on the other piece. What, what's the tie-in that makes that so important?
So project size and economics of the deal. It, it functions better as a larger facility at six-hundred-and-fifty bedrooms, not seven-twenty-five, six-fifty is what we're planning on doing. So you can get a career-oriented manager there, you can fund a full onsite staff security, and get the proper staffing in place if you have the six-fifty beds versus the four-hundred beds.
Wouldn't that give you more parking if it was left C1?
Well, regardless with the private dormitory ordinance, we have to have seventy-five percent parking spaces to bedroom ratio, which we see across the market is, you know, almost too much. So we will build that because we have to, but we think park, the parking garage will be empty.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I'm Jim Daniel, I'm a commercial real estate broker. I got an update today on the percent of occupancy of the various in-town complexes, and it's running between ninety-six and a hundred percent. So that's where it is right now. But you got to remember, we've got projects online. We have a, the project that's under construction on Assembly Street. A Catawba Street property has, has just closed in January, and that's online. The Greg property, and it's gone through all city application and permitting. Greg property has gone through the necessary zoning change that y'all did. Of the present projects, seventy-five, no, two-thirds of the Park Central project is now leased by the university. It will go to a hundred percent next year as they take off the Bates South projects from use. It will go to 100% next year as they take off the Bates South projects from use. That will be, Bates South will be replaced by 3,700 bedrooms that will be built in the next three to 10 years, five years. Uh, so, and then there's also a project, uh, there've been several projects that have died. You had the one next to the library that nothing's happened on. There's been several on Shop Road, nothing's happened on. The Greg property is, is gone through the permitting process too. So, there's three or four in the pipeline that are ahead of this project, that are more or less, I understand, ready to go. So, you know, how do they fit into everything when one project is being used completely by the university? Secondly, this project does not comply with the Vista Master Plan or the projected plan for the Vista. So I would raise that, that this is contrary to what we, what the city has designated this area for. Um, I, I tried to find the deed yesterday. I, I don't know whether this property's closed yet. I, I see nothing from the county to these people. But that's basically, I think, this is the wrong project for that location.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Steve Henson, I'm a resident of the Vista on Lady Street, and also part of the, uh, Neighborhood Association and on the Development Committee. Uh, my wife and I have lived in the Vista for six years. Again, we live on Lady Street, and our problem is, we don't feel like we invested in a student housing neighborhood. Uh, I think it's unfair to the residents who have built the Vista this far, and we bought our place counting on the zoning that's currently there. This is about a block, a half a block from where we live. And we just don't think it's the right place for, to change that zoning and make it student housing. It's true, they can still build a smaller project, but I don't think that we want that bigger project there. We haven't had, um, student housing on that side of Gervais Street in the Vista, other than the project that was approved at the library up there. So, we're against that. I know the hub's been successful on Main Street, and I'm all for bowling alleys, but I don't think in this specific area, in this neighborhood, uh, that it's a good fit. And we're for development, we were for the client project that was approved and, uh, hadn't turned out. But, um, anyway, our vision for that neighborhood is more permanent residence. And when you talk about student housing, and we appreciate meeting with the developer, we're talking about, you know, renting by the bed and already furnished units, and that's just really not what we'd like to have in our neighborhood. So we appreciate your consideration, thanks.
Thank you.
My name's Jim Caldwell, and I live about two blocks, uh, away from the, uh, from the property as well. Um, also in the Vista Neighborhood Association. Just as a point of clarification, because you listened for an hour and a half ahead on what I think's got some similarities. Uh, the entire Neighborhood Association has not met with the developer, okay? A few of us did, and we appreciate that. But again, unlike what you heard over here before, it isn't the whole group that's talked to them. Not everyone's going to get up here and talk for a number of reasons. Some of them can't be here and so forth. But as someone said earlier, uh, the entire Neighborhood Association is against this. Reason being, it's not, somebody said it's an outlier piece if you don't rezone. That, those two pieces right there are far from an outlier piece. That's your gateway to the river. The university understands this and is building towards the river. The city should understand that also. It's a tremendous opportunity lost to give that to students. Look, we were all students once. You, you just heard for an hour and a half what happens with, if you, when you put students in. We shouldn't take a, a goldmine and turn it into something that can turn into, 10 years from now, you're going to be hearing that from the residents that are there. It's a very slippery slope when you have very stable residents like us who will look at this and then leave. And now you've flipped an entire district. It's a historic district, it's an arts and entertainment district, and you're starting to go down, you know, a slippery five-point slope where you got sled raids, and you, you heard all that tonight. We're trying to avoid it, so we're urging you to deny the request. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Guy Jones. For, uh, the last 25 years, I've been fortunate to have a business in the Vista, called Gervais and Lincoln Street. And, and I've been a board member of the Congry Vista Guild for 25 years as well. My friend Rick Rowe didn't mention it, but he's also a, a board member of the Vista Guild. We really do have serious concerns about more student housing, uh, in, in the Vista. We really would like to see permanent residents who are invested, uh, in, in the neighborhood. And that's been something that we've, uh, looked at and, uh, thought for, for a long time, more residential development in, in the Vista. But, uh, we would much prefer to see permanent residents as opposed to more student housing. So, the, uh, the Vista Guild has, has concerns about this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Council, hi, I'm Ted Fattner, I live at 311 Senate Street down in the Vista. I applaud you for your foresight, uh, in helping to build Columbia into the city that it will be. This great vision in the southeast is going to be a place where many people come to live and provide a permanent tax base. I'm a seventh-generation Columbian, but I've been gone for 43 years. I just moved back two years ago, and I hope to spend the next 43 years right where I live, in the Vista. I think what you're doing tonight is looking at a gateway project that has the ability to define what's going to look like for many years to come, a beautiful city. And this is one part of it, and we need to make sure that what we do affects that long-term nature of, of planning that will be, provide all of us a, a beautiful place to live and a place to grow and raise our families as well. Columbia, unlike Charleston and Greenville, has not developed the downtown area. And the responsibility of these restrictions and these covenants and these zoning laws cannot be underscored. So I would applaud you on what you've done, and I would vote, hope that you would vote not to approve this particular rezoning request as it does affect that long-term nature that I talk about. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. I'd like to call for a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve the request to rezone the parcel from C1 to M1.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Opposed.
No.
One. The motion is approved.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Wait, 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 wait. Brian has something to tell us all.
But April, you can, April, you can make it right after that. Guys, um, I wanted to thank staff and the, um, the commission. I'm, I'm rolling off the board. I'm going to be, um, moving to Atlanta for a little while, and, um, it's been an honor to serve with you guys. Appreciate y'all sending me off with a bang with a good meeting tonight. And, uh, it's been a pleasure. I hope we all stay in touch, if there's anything you guys ever need from me, please let me know. Staff, it's been a pleasure.
Going home. We're not going out.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Wait, well, Brian's got, I think...
I think, uh, to adjourn, you need...
Much in tough proof.
Wait a second. This might be Brian Cook's last meeting too.
It might what?
Be Brian Cook's last meeting too. So I thought, I thought we, I think we need to ask Brian that...
It is my last meeting. Uh, I'm moving to be the Town Administrator in Blythewood. So I'll just be down the road if I can help anybody or do anything in Blythewood.
Congratulations to both of you.
Thank you.
Now, now a meeting for adjournment. I mean, a mo, a motion.
April's ready to go.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved. Meeting adjourned.